There, that's where they're going to be starting. Okay, so then just mark that when we get the revised plans. It's about where they are, so we know.
And then just the second question I had is just, can you explain? I understand that this is subcontracted effectively, right? So...
Some, not all.
So not all. So...
So they have three plows. They have one, two plows attached to dump trucks and one plow that gets it with the bobcat.
Does the subcontracting come to your property?
No. They go out.
Where are the subcontractors?
It's all...
In your, let me, let me, if I can phrase it differently. Here in your application, you show invoices for Driscoll and I think Red Brick was the other one?
Crimson.
Crimson, sorry. Who is it?
Crimson.
Crimson. Do they use your prop, do they use your property?
No.
Okay, so I guess my question is, why would they count towards your 2012 level if they're not on your property? If you're just, if you're just a, if you're just subcontracting out for your, you know, GCing for your clients, that, is that something that we, there's no real impact? So I guess, I'm just trying to figure out how we evaluate that. This doesn't really indicate to us how much plowing you're doing.
It's, that was a, that was sort of difficult to explain because every year is a different year. This year...
Well, but I understand, but 2012 level was supposed to be the cap, but...
But what are you actually doing?
We've got two dump trucks.
You have your, okay.
We go, we go out and we plow streets and we plow parking lots and elsewhere.
Okay.
That's what they do.
Two dump trucks, plows attached?
During a snow and ice emergency.
Okay.
And they go wherever they're contracted to go. It might be the hospital parking lot, it might be streets in the neighborhood. It's varying things. And it varies on a, on a year-by-year basis. This year, they were out every day for six weeks straight.
But you have a second-tier subcontractor.
Sometimes they do it...
Helps you out with the plowing?
No, sometimes you do it as a sub.
We, we're hired as a sub.
We're hired.
Oh, okay, so that's what we're trying to figure out, yeah.
I understand. You're the second-tier subcontractor.
Can I get the front of those?
Oh, one at a time, guys.
Yes.
Yeah. That's good.
Now I get it.
Anything else on seven? All right. It's later than I thought. So let's move to public comment. Ned, Maggie, Josh, if you could please sit back. I am going to reread how we're handling this for the rules.
Just a quick one. Some of the stuff is in here. Like it says, space is 25 through 34 are available for packing of the equipment now. Tell us that's where they're going to buy the equipment.
Yeah. And that's what I was saying with the matrix. We need to go back through and pull some of these things that are in different pieces, places together again. So, we're going to move to recognizing the public for their testimony on what we've talked about tonight. Again, the rules are wait to be recognized by me before speaking. Come to the table, give your name and address, speak into the microphone so the cameras can pick you up. When you are done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to me and I will make sure that we get an answer. So Ned, please don't leave. Speakers may not cross, because you may be required to answer questions, so...
I was just going to walk the down hall.
That's fine. I just don't want you to leave permanently. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. Again, I will get the answers for you or we will note that it's something that needs to be answered. We're going to be, after we hear from the public, we're going to move to identifying the outstanding items for the next meeting. And then obviously, this will be continued to May 28th, at which we hope we get some of the answers back and go forward. So, Mr. Joe Henning, please, you are up first.
I think, my name is Phil Joe Henning. I live at 23 Parkway Drive. I think a lot of my concerns that were expressed in my letter from yesterday have been addressed by the changes that you've made. But nevertheless, I'd like to quickly go through them because there are a few things that haven't been addressed. I am writing to express my outrage at the discussion at the end of the planning board meeting on 23 April. I find the frustration of the applicants and even the planning board over the duration of the hearings for the special permit for Thayer Nursery to be nothing less than ludicrous. The application that was originally presented was not adequate. That is clear from the number of changes that have subsequently occurred. What do I mean? I mean that the application must conform to the requirements of the bylaw amendment that was passed by town meeting in May of 2014. I believe that it was the responsibility of the planning director to vet the application against the requirements of the bylaw amendment prior to the public hearings. Based on the letter presented by my attorney at the first meeting of the public hearings, that was not done. Furthermore, the revisions are not even tracked nor marked so that we can understand which revision is currently before the board. When a vote occurs, how will we know which version is before the board? And how will we know if the board has thoroughly reviewed the correct version? My attorney, Matthew Dunn, asked whether the applicant even qualified under the requirements of the bylaw amendment. John Flynn, the town attorney, did not respond in his letter to that question. The zoning board of appeals in its hearing on 30 April also did not vote on the question, though it was presented to them by way of a letter from Matthew Dunn. The application is still not complete and the most basic questions remain unanswered. The board started the public hearings nevertheless. As we sit here at these public hearings in mid-May, still reviewing a constantly changing application that was originally presented in October of 2014, I wonder when the applicants, the planning director, and the planning board will present a complete document from a thoroughly vetted applicant? It is not the neighbors who are delaying the hearings. It is the incredibly poor quality of the application and the vetting process. My primary concerns, as an abutter, continue to be: One, is the applicant qualified under the requirements of the bylaw amendment? Where is the documentation that proves they are qualified? Two, where is the glossary in the application where terms that are not new or not commonly used are defined? I'm not sure at this moment if all will agree regarding what a grow-out area or a land care yard means. Three, where is the 2012 baseline? Where is the detail that will enable the town and perhaps a judge to verify the baseline? What measure will be used? Will it be revenue by line of business? Will the total tie to Thayer's 2012 tax return? The baseline has to be independently verifiable and it must be reasonably enforceable. Four, when will the utility map be updated to show septic, the water well, and the gas line? National Grid has said that there is gas service on the property. Is the septic system adequate for the number of employees on site? Are the bathroom facilities adequate? The members of the board may recall that the building inspector included his concern over septic in his letter to the board. When will we have the opportunity to review the drainage plan? The board may recall that the trench along the southern boundary of the nursery was supposed to drain into a cistern. That cistern has not, has yet to be installed and my property continues to flood with every rainstorm. Inspection of the trench today and comparison of the trench to the nursery plan that was presented to the board will show that the eastern terminus of the trench is well beyond the terminus shown on the plan. That inconsistency exacerbates the flooding problem that I constantly experience. When will abutters finally see the protections that the town meeting intended to provide to abutting neighbors? Will offending activities be more centrally located on the property so that the applicants bear more of the burden as opposed to the abutting neighbors? Can firewood distribution be moved off-site? Can more of the offending activities be distributed to other locations such as 217 and 237 Hillside? Currently, the plan shows all of the activities that create vibration, noise, dust, and odors along the eastern and southern property lines of lots N12, 1B, and 1C, where neighbors, rather than the applicants, suffer most. In consideration of the abutters, I urge the board to reject the current application and to send it back to the applicants with specific recommendations. I also urge the board to immediately make a determination through town council regarding whether the current applicant operated a nursery in 2012 and had a special permit to do so. Writing the application in a public meeting is entirely too time-consuming and it is not appropriate. I think it will be best for all if we can look at one finished application that complies in every respect to the bylaw amendment and gives the abutters meaningful relief while enabling the nursery to function efficiently. I think a lot of, you know, a few of the items have been addressed. But I still have concerns about where is, what is the version number of the current application that we're looking at? Is it numbered? Where is it? Like, is it, is it the one upstairs? Is it, you know, which one am I looking at? Does anyone know? Like, should there be version numbers? Should the version numbers change when the, when the application changes? How will I know? I guess the other thing that I quickly like to mention is a, an email from you Cole to the board. And what I think it shows is the unfairness that certain abutters suffer and other abutters don't need to worry about. And you says, "Dear Alex and Bill, this email summarizes our perspective on the site plan for Thayer Nursery. Please distribute this to the planning board for its consideration." One, we understand that the site plan does not envision any changes in how Thayer uses the quadrant adjacent to our property versus how it was operated previously. We support this outcome. So as long as the, the special permit doesn't affect them, they're fully in support. We have discussed with Josh and Maggie that Thayer will plant two rows of Norwegian spruce trees along the border of our property line, providing visual coverage from the corner of our property to approximately two-thirds the way down, down toward Hillside Street. This is satisfactory to us in terms of creating visual coverage. Three, we understand that according to the site plan, under consideration by the planning board, the bulk materials will be stored at a central location near the wood barn. We support this outcome. The inconvenience of ours was odors from those materials, which we have experienced in the past. As long as it's, it's beside Pam's house, it's fine. But next to his house, it's not fine. We understand that Thayer is planning to have some type of shields on its spotlights used at Christmas time, which would be helpful for us since we do not have a direct sightline to one of the spotlights, since we do have a direct sightline. We understand that Thayer will have a new water drainage system as part of the plan, which we also support. So, you know, one of the things that Josh mentioned while he was talking about moving some of these activities to 217 Hillside Street was that he has certain agreements with some of the neighbors. What? You know, what about us? So, because he has agreements with some of the neighbors on Harland Street and because, you know, certain commitments have made, been made to you Cole, it's okay if Pam, John and I, and Chris and Tina continue to suffer all of the consequences. That is wrong. I think if, if the board cannot find a way to treat us all equally, then it must reject this application. There is no reason why we need to be victimized by this. Robert Mussey was at the meeting when Pam and I presented the alternate plan. And Robert Mussey immediately got up and said, "Oh, it can't be near my house." Everybody who supports the nursery and the bylaw amendment, they all support it because they know that we take the brunt of all this activity. And that can't continue. That cannot continue. So in, in the interest of fairness, this all has to be spread around or the special permit needs to be denied. Because what is happening here with this plan is victimizing Pam Lepore tremendously, but she can speak for herself. And it's victimizing John and I, and that's not right. So, I, I guess there are a couple of things that Josh brought up that I, I did not agree with. One of them was, he mentions the problems of trucks turning into 217 Hillside Street. I guess there are problems with the trucks turning into Forest Street. So are the problems at Hillside Street more serious than the problems at Forest Street? I don't know. Somebody has to look at that. It certainly can't be that we're going to victimize the neighbors on Forest Street and the people on Hillside Street get a free ride. Additionally, he mentioned that, I, I thought the idea that all of the plant material could be positioned, let's say during the day, was an excellent idea. But it was instantly poo-pooed. And I, I think that was wrong. Because if you look at the lot at the corner of Forest and Hillside Street, you will notice that there is no mulching of that plant material. That plant material is standing in dirt balls or it's standing in containers or it's standing in burlap. And all of it is above ground and none of it is mulched. So I, I think that there's a little bit of, I don't know, inconsistency in what I see and what I hear. And I, I know that that, that there is no mulch. And there hasn't been all winter. There hasn't been a shred of mulch. I hear about mulch being used in the landscaping activity, but I don't see any mulch. So I, I think that, you know, that, that would have to be, let's say, verified. And, and just to close, I think it's very important for the board to go back to Mr. Flynn and ask him if these applicants qualify. Because, you know, that's key. There's no sense in talking about fencing if they don't even qualify at all. And in my opinion, Thayer Nursery Corporation was running the nursery in 2012 and it did not have a special permit. Regardless of what the owners had, it, it's a separate individual. Thayer Nursery Corporation is a separate individual. And it did not have a special permit and could not have a special permit. I think we need to get clarification on that because John Flynn didn't give it and John Leonard didn't give it on the 30th of April. It was presented to him and he did not opine on it. We need an answer to that before we can make decisions about the rest of this.
Thank you very much for your comments. And just to let the public know, we received a copy of Mr. Joe Henning's letter earlier today. I think I got mine when I got back to the house prior to coming to this meeting. So we will be taking those comments on board as we go forward. Does anybody else wish to speak to what we have been discussing tonight? No? Yes, come forward, please.
My name's Pam Lepore, 44 Forest Street. I think the fencing issue, they're still saying that it's 15 feet back from my property line, but I thought it was actually further. They had mentioned extending it a little more, but there was no mention of that tonight.
We'll need that clarified from the memo that they're going to present at the next meeting, so please go ahead.
I just want to agree with everything Phil Joe Henning just said. I think you're aware of my opposition to the location of the land care yard. I think it's just totally unacceptable to use my property as a buffer to this commercial industrial operation. And I, I just want to thank Alex for acknowledging the noise that we're experiencing now because I was on my deck Mother's Day and 11 o'clock, the bobcat started and ruined my brunch. And Tuesday night, they were still running at 7 o'clock at night. And it's summer, it's finally beautiful out. And I will never get these days back. I'll never get that Mother's Day back. And there've been other Mother Days, Mother's Days that have been ruined with bobcats as well. And I'd also, again, my question is, what are we basing the 2012 cap on? I'm confused about that. And I'm worried as, we're talking about the sound mitigation. I'm worried about what happens if it is ineffective, if these fences don't work. And I know discussion, the review was mentioned for a year. I would really like a six-month review with this concern. And again, just the location of this land care yard, it just, I agree with everything Phil said.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. One question I forgot to answer of, and I'll recognize in just a moment, Mr. Joe Henning and everybody else, just so you know, the application we're working with is the one that came in this white binder. Anything else will be presented to us, as I've said, in a supplementary memo, not a revision of the tax. So this is what we're working from, just so you know. No, the April 5th was supplementary information. What, what we're going through is the white binder. I know you've put the April 5th information in here. We'll talk about how we deal with that. But that's considered to be supplementary information. This is the application. So, just a second ahead, Mr. Rowe, ahead of you. Mr. Rowe, please.
Thank you. John Rowe, 23 Parkway Drive. I have a couple of, one thing I want to talk about is I believe that this board has now heard from all of the director abutters of Thayer Nursery. We've heard from, a joint letter was sent to this board from Tina and Chris Stevens, Phil and Pam and me outlining what we hope to get out of this if a special permit is granted. And you've heard from the Coles. You've heard from Stephen Davis. You've heard from the neighbor next to Stephen Davis, I forget his name, Carol Stocker's husband. And one thing that we have here, and I think the board has to recognize this, is that we are all, every single one of the abutters is in agreement on one thing. And that thing is that we want the industrial and offensive piece of this operation to be moved away from all of us. And, and you have that in writing and people have spoken in these public meetings. There's not one single director abutter that is in favor of having the high-impact industrial nature of this landscape wood distribution business close to them. And as Phil pointed out, it's closer to the abutters than it is the applicants. And I think what this shows is, I don't know how this board can justify issuing a permit for this activity when it's difficult to say that it is in harmony with the residential character of the neighborhood when every one of the abutters says it's not. And I think if you look at Statute 48, Chapter 9, it's clear that the zoning bylaw or this special permit must be in harmony with the, with the zoning of the area. And, and I think that what we've seen here, all of the public opinion or, or, or all of the opinion of the abutters is uniform. We are all together on this. There's not one single person ascending to the fact that they don't want the high-impact industrial nature of this next to them. And we are hoping that if a permit is issued, well, we don't believe that you can prove that it's in harmony with the, the zoning of Residence A or Residence Double A. But if it is issued, we urge you to move this high-impact stuff off of the site, the wood especially, and all of the land care and truck traffic to behind 217 Hillside Street. And if there has to be an accommodation made so that trucks can get into that driveway, then perhaps an accommodation should be made to do that. The people that abut that property have not spoken out in any of these public hearings. They've all been notified. And not one of the abutters down there has offered any disagreement with issuing the special permit. So, these are people that support the special permit. It makes the most sense to put it there, not near the people that oppose the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi. Tina Tevens, 39 Parkway Drive, Director Abutter. I just want to follow up. Last week's meeting, I said that I'd bring the actual sample of the acoustoblock, the fence.
Yes, you did.
So it's here. And this is what it looks like. So it's basically these grommet holes.
Okay.
There's pla, plastic ties that go through that and get adhered to the fence.
Can you pass it, Tim, actually?
Sure.
Or actually, Mike, probably easier, how you write.
And I followed up with the company and also, they told me they were actually working up a clause for Waymouth Club. Because Waymouth Club is actually expanding. And there were three or four abutters that were concerned about the noise. And the architect recommended acoustoblock. And also, the town of Waymouth, I guess, also proved this already. It's already been used in the town. So it's been used with success. And one of the abutters of Waymouth Club, where they're expanding, is a contractor. And this is something that he recommended as well.
Can we keep this on our files, please?
That is yours.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that.
So that was one thing. And the other thing I wanted is, my husband followed up with Bill Clark, but I noticed he's not here on the bobcat.
He was briefly. He's, there's a selectmen's meeting upstairs, so he's been moving back and forth.
So as far as the bobcat, he looked into it. And I know that, I think, Tim, you have the copies of the chain as far as the noise. That's our, that's 80% for us. And our thing is noise. So, but putting things in place that, I think it's great, you know, listening to you guys get into the, you know, nitty-gritty details of the special permit is wonderful. But as an abutter, I'm listening to this saying, this isn't enforceable. Like, I'm not going over when a truck, like, when I was awakened, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I'm not going over my PJs. You know, and what is, what is allowed and what isn't allowed. So I think when you look at the special permit as a whole, think of actually living next to it and, you know, what would be enforceable? You know, what, I'd say the permanent things that you could put in place. Like a fence with, you know, sound barrier, hours of operation as far as, you know, when the bobcats can run. Quieter bobcats would be, I really feel, that's my personal, is 80% of it. It's the bobcat noise. Because I, you know, no one wants to police their neighbors. I mean, I don't think anybody at this table is interested and I know none of us are. So I think that's the biggest thing for me.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your comments. Does anybody else wish to speak? So, seeing nobody else, I'm going to, Ned, if you'll come forward for a couple of reasons. One, I want to give you the opportunity to address anything you may want to, you may not want to. But two, I want to talk about the steps for next week's meeting. So if you wish to address any concerns, that's fine. If not, let's move into the, the next steps.
No, I don't have any comment.
All right, well, in that case, I think you've heard from us and from the people who spoke what our concerns are and what we've talked about tonight. Some of these actually do flow through to other parts of the special permit. So I'm hoping what we get from you at the next meeting would be a memorandum addressing some of these issues. Again, keeping in mind how the board would be able to enforce any of these. So we've talked about timelines, we've talked about specific quantities. We would like to hear your opinion on those. We may end up with our own opinion on those going forward. But please be prepared to address all of those items, again, in a memorandum form. Tim, you've got a list, fairly complete list of what we've been talking about. Okay. I've got a list as well. I think we've probably taken lists. So if, if those of us who have written down lists can get their, what they've got to Tim, make sure it's complete and then forward it over to Ned to make sure that we understand what is an outstanding item. Tim and I will look at the matrix and revise it down so we can get things into a little bit more comprehensive categories and move forward. I'm hoping this is addressing some of the concerns that were raised about the process. The other critical thing, I think you, you touched on it when your initial presentation, is those stormwater discussions because that will affect the timing if we, we can finish this up. Other than that, if the board doesn't have anything else, I think we are continued to six, no.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, one quick question.
I just, well, before we move on, I went through and it looks like we have 21 more. I just, well, before we move on, I went through and it looks like we have 21 more paragraph sections to go through and within that 10 sub paragraphs. So I just wanted to just test the boards, you know, we're suggesting the 28th is our hopeful timeline, so we have three other things that night.
I think the 28th is likely to change because of the stormwater. You said it would take another couple of weeks before dates could be set for the engineers. Is that correct? I believe that's what you said this morning. If so, that bumps us right up against the 28th. I don't see that we can logically finish. The other thing is, some of those paragraphs, the way they're laid out, are repetitive.
I did see that.
Yeah. And I think we're going to be able to consolidate a lot of them. Tim has, by the way, I sort of sprung this on Tim last week, saying, "Look, we really need to do this." And we had town meeting in between and he's had a couple of other things. So he has done yeoman's work in putting together what he has. I think it's critical that we make sure that we know zoning, proposals, butters, Joe Prandak's requests, all in one piece so we can see it. But I think we'll be able to consolidate some of that to make it a little bit easier for all of us to follow, so.
I do want to second your compliment to Tim and thank him. I think, you know, I had requested this and it's a huge step in figuring out where we are. So thank you, Tim, and great job.
Yeah, well done. Anything else? Not, I believe we are continued to 7:00 PM on May 28th.
So moved.
Second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Sure.
Okay, great. So let me just, great, excellent.
Seven.
Seven o'clock, yeah. So that gives us 6:45 for Windmere, 7 for Thayer, 7:30 for 333 Brush Hill. I think 333 Brush Hill may get delayed a little bit because it's going to take us more than half an hour on that.
That's what you want to do.
Oh, that's also probably true. You'll keep us informed or keep the planning department informed of timelines on that. I think we have ticked off everything else that was on our list, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless anybody else has any additional business. Second? All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. See you on the.